...to go up there and camp for like fourteen days and then move to a different spot. No, no, we'd like to.
Wow, that's a long way away.
Yeah.
That was Carl.
So I accept it? Oh, I'm gonna, no, I'm gonna accept it.
James, do you wanna sit here soon?
John?
Of course, it's his birthday, so he can.
He may not be here, yeah.
I'm gonna steal that.
Yeah, I did. That was pretty good. That was pretty good, I thought.
Yeah, I thought that. There's a few things that I go ahead and make notes of, and that was one of them.
I read that to Gary and he started laughing, but that's good. I did like Craig's comment. I did like Craig's comment yesterday about helping. You heard what? Really? Really? Wow.
Well, it's five o'clock. Thank you all for being here, and frankly, we are really excited to be meeting live. Zoom works great, but this is so much better. And we appreciate so much you being here and being spread apart. You notice that we're spread way apart here, too. And just trying to keep the social distancing the way it should be. So we appreciate again you being here. We're honored tonight to have the presentation of the colors and the Pledge of Allegiance led by the Cache County Sheriff's Honor Guard. And so we will invite the Honor Guard to proceed now.
Honor, attention. For Mark. Post. Present, post. Will the audience please decide the Pledge of Allegiance with me?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Order, post. Ready, face. For Mark.
Thank you very much for that very special presentation today. We are again grateful to have the Sheriff's Honor Guard be with us to do that. Our opening was to be done by Council, or Vice Chairman Gina Worthing, but she emailed or texted me and said that she's involved with a graduation thing with her daughter, so she's going to be late. So I said that I would fill in for her. I'd like to do my opening in the form of prayer. Our Father in Heaven, we come to thee in this Cache County Council meeting this night with gratitude in our hearts for all that we've been given, for the peace and the plenty which we enjoy here, for the wonderful people with whom we associate and work with and for. We're grateful to thee for good leadership in our state and in our nation. We're grateful for all things that are good and pray that the things we do this evening might be in accordance with thy mind and will, and we might be led to do those things which will be most beneficial to the citizens of this wonderful county. In these blessings we ask in the name of Jesus Christ, amen. Okay. You've all seen the agenda, I'm sure. Is there anyone that I can make a motion to approve the agenda?
Move to approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
There is, I should have mentioned, there is one little change on the agenda this morning. You might want to read. Item number eleven C, we were gonna set up a public hearing for June the ninth for a budget opening. Cameron's asked that we switch instead to June twenty-third. Is there any concern with that change?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. All right, it's now time to review the minutes. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes of our last meeting? Do we have a?
Just review the minutes.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Thank you. Any follow-up to the minutes? All right, moving on, report our county executive, Craig Butters.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Have a few items to report. Do not have any appointments to make, but for our next meeting, I will have appointments for the Solid Waste Advisory Board. So I'll bring those to you at our next meeting. Well, to start off with, I'll get COVID-19 out of the way, and I just wanted to point out, as most of you are aware, that Governor Herbert has come out with the Utah Leads Together 3.0. And so this is a new document, but covers the previous two documents, plus adds an emphasis in this documented in version three to provide instructions for high-risk individuals, and it also addresses the impact of multicultural communities, and it begins planning for our recovery. So those are all things, and I believe this has been sent out by the Utah Association of Counties, but if any of you don't have a copy and would like to have access to that, please let me know. Also, I wanted to once again point out that we are planning on moving forward with plans for the fair, and it is our hope that we'll be able to hold the fair, and it's our intention to hold fairs as previously done, but with adherence to social or personal distancing guidelines and other things that we have that will be in compliance with the state's level of risk, I guess you could say. So if we're back to green by then, we'll pretty much be back to normal for our county fair. Of course, it is our hope to be in that situation. So we are moving forward with that, and I just wanted to point out that we will have an extra night of activity in the rodeo arena. It will be a barrels and broncs activity for saddle broncs, and we'll be selling tickets. They are currently available for that activity, so hopefully that'll be something. You know, initially, we wanted to hold that activity as something to provide more opportunity for people to attend, but still not be crammed into the arena. So an extra night activity, we felt like would help to do that. I think we'll still have a good crowd at all four nights this year.
So that'll be Wednesday night?
That'll be Wednesday night, mm-hmm, yes. Also, June first is the date that many of our mountain roads will be open. You'll see many of the gates opened. I'm familiar most with the High Creek Road, and the gate is still closed there. Many of these roads don't see the snow leave until after that date, but I still would like to see a change made so that we could get those roads open by Memorial Day. Especially this year, we could really use that extra space, extra room for people that like to spend time in the mountains on Memorial Day weekends. So I will be visiting with our supervisor here in the forest to see if we can get that changed and still meet the requirements of the travel plan that the Forest Service has. Also, I wanted to give Bryce an opportunity to update you on our EMS study, and that will conclude my report. Unless you have any questions.
Any questions for Craig at the moment?
All right.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Craig. There's not a whole lot more to report. I think last time we talked a little bit about, we just received the draft report from the consultant. We met with that consultant since we've last met, and we gave them a list of areas that we thought might be helpful to clear up within the report. Additionally, the Sims Board, after some discussion, they felt like they wanted to give the consultant plenty of time to get a quality report, and so we indicated to the consultant that rather than rushing them to meet the May twentieth deadline, we felt like we wanted to give them some extra time. And in that extra time, our very own Chief Hammer, he went through some of the mix-ups that they had with the computer-aided dispatch data, and he went through and he cleaned a lot of that, and just recently provided them with that cleaned-up data, which we hope will help them as they provide their recommendations. And so he spent a lot of time on that, and think that he needs some recognition for that. Beyond that, they indicated to me that they expect to get a report to me this week, a final report, and I anticipate that we'll have our stakeholder group again read through that, and if there's any changes that they would suggest, some high-level changes, we'll probably have them submit those back to the consultant. We may do a conference call again. That remains to be seen what they want to do. So that's about the extent of the report that I have. Is there any questions that you have?
Do you have a date, Bryce, so when you start forward to the council?
They initially told me that they were gonna get it to me by the twenty-second, and we're happy to distribute that to the council once it's finalized. I don't think that we have any reservation with that, but we haven't heard a formal date yet when we anticipate to get it. And because the Sims Board has allotted them some additional time, they haven't given me a firm date on when they anticipate that they'll have it to me, but they do expect hopefully sometime this week.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Bryce? Thank you, Bryce.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay, we do have one item of special interest, a review of the 2020 RAPS Restaurant Tax Awarded Funds. And who do we have here to address that? Craig, okay.
All right, I brought my book with me. I haven't memorized it yet, so I apologize. And I may even have a hard time finding something in the book, but Gina, let's see, Gina was not on the committee. It's Barbara and David, yes, are also on the committee. So you received the initial recommendations from the committee, the RAPS committee, and I just wanted to point out that, you know, with the cancellation of many of the activities, we did reach out to the applicants to make sure that they were planning on still holding their activity or their event, and if they were not, some of those did not receive funding this year. There are others who may still be on the docket and will still receive some funding if they're not holding their activity because of other expenses that they've had associated with planning for this year and for future years. So I'd be happy to answer any questions with you. This document will be made public now, and prior to our next meeting, you'll probably hear from some of the applicants.
The one question I have, I think we were anticipating about 3.4 million, and the total allocations were about 2.5 or something.
Yeah.
Quite a significant amount held in reserve.
We held that in anticipation of next year's revenue being off quite a bit. And so we didn't want to allocate the full amount, or, you know, as we have done in the past, we wanted to make sure that there's some held in reserve for our activities for next year.
I know there are some venues whose ongoing viability is in question due to the shutdown. And so it's important that we continue to provide the support that's necessary so that they can survive through this year, because they do provide a great amount of revenue through RAPS with the people that they bring into the Valley.
That's true. I did talk with our tourism director today about that issue. She does have some funding in her fund balance that she can help to address some of those issues with our longtime event sponsors, some of those that have become icons in our Valley. And so we do have other sources of revenue there that we could use at your approval, after your approval, to do some of those things also. So in addition to that funding, the funds that we have not allocated or we're not recommending be allocated, we do have some other transient room tax funds that would be available. And so our tourism director would also like to work with those entities to make sure that they can remain viable for the future. I'm not sure many of them may have applied for funding from the federal government also. So those are some things we need to study and make sure that, you know, that we're not, of course, double funding in some of those situations. We want to make sure that they're viable and that they're able to continue, but we want to also make sure that we're not over allocating, so.
Craig, was there a formula that the committee used in determining who would get the money? Like as usual, but also in looking at who wasn't open for the season? Was there a concerted effort to save a certain amount of money? Or was it that money was saved because it wasn't awarded because those entities weren't operating?
Yeah, there wasn't really affordably used. We basically just looked at each individual application and what the status of that application was, and there were some of the applicants that gave us some feedback as far as, you know, what they would still like to see allocated. And so we just evaluated those on an individual basis, pretty much.
That's why we sent out the emails. Betty sent those out to each of those that were saying that things had been canceled, and we got a lot of good feedback from them, too.
So are we gonna go over the ones that are canceled and still got allocated about the same amount of money? How are we, as council, gonna know as to why we awarded them, yet they're not having any? Do we specifically ask that question, or how are we gonna receive feedback on that?
We could, oh, sorry, Craig, go ahead. I'd say Betty has copies of the emails that came back from everyone, you know, that we had a concern about, and she can, we can probably provide those to you.
Well, I guess maybe I could just do one for specific. It's the very first one that caught my attention, and that was, we all know that the Cruisin' is not gonna happen this year, and yet we allocated them according to this, most everything that they asked for, and yet we're not gonna have an event. Is there a reason? Or is that since it's been announced that they're not gonna have it, is that?
And all of it, all of what you're saying is actually, initially, they said they were holding all of these.
Yeah, they were right up until last week.
They met, and when we were meeting, we were still with what had been sent back. It was all agreeing to go. And then all of a sudden, after our rest committees had met, then they came out and said they had scheduled way back to just.
So for now until next meeting, we're gonna review those, or?
I'd look for your guidance on this, but I think it might be a good idea to bring the committee back together.
And we talked about some of these things would happen, as well as possibly even this fall, if some of these, if there's some of these events that are able to be scheduled in, that's why we have that amount sitting there, that we could maybe allocate some of that during this next year. Try to be as flexible as possible because of what's happened.
Something that came right to mind was, of course, the Festival Opera. We're not gonna have any of that stuff, and we ordered an awful lot of money. I would just like to know what's, please explain.
You know, of course, we did cut the allocation for the Festival Opera more than what it was in the past, but they do have other programs, like programs for schools and things like that.
As well as a staff that is still trying to work.
A full-time staff, keep things going.
It's not just the events that they were having, but they had a staff that is still trying to, you know, keep things going, their own, and that. So we tried to look at all of them.
Well, also for you, I just have a big question. How, if we're not having an event, and all of a sudden we still give them the same amount of money or a similar amount of money, it's a large amount of money.
I'm with Gordy.
But we're open for, we're able to be educated, is what I'm saying.
And I know the committee would be happy with some of these new things that have happened, even in the past counties. I think it'd be very wise if the council says, hey, relook at a lot of these, yeah.
Well, I'll request.
We may have to do this, what, three or four times a center? I don't know how things are going.
Yeah, it's possible, but, you know, we could make the allocation based on the application, but if they do not hold the activity and do not produce any invoices, then, of course, they don't get any funding. It has to be invoiced, and those invoices have to reflect what actually happened.
And to go along with that, some of the responses we had back, and David kind of referred to this, they're looking at maybe holding something in the fall. Well, again, like Craig says, that we're going to have to look at that individually, and we may have to revisit it two or three times if that's what happens on it, too.
A lot of things that may not be able to be happened this year, and it doesn't mean you can't carry it over. It's just a thing that I guess we're gonna watch it close.
Yeah.
And we also feel strongly how it's going to be cut probably very dramatically next year.
Right.
And so we could maybe, as we work through these, and then coming into next years, that we still have something to be able to keep. You know, if we get back to normal, we could still keep some programs, so it is.
We have confidence in you, and we just have questions.
We do, too. Very right.
You know, I just want to mention, I went out to Baby Animal Days yesterday, and they haven't calculated all the numbers, but they're estimating that more than half of those that attended were from outside the Valley. And so we get that venue, we get the Cruisin', we get the fair, we get the opera that brings substantial visitors to the Valley who spend their money here for hotels and restaurants and things like that, which are the source of our funds for RAPS. And so it's important that we keep these things alive for the future.
They do, if they're somewhere for a week, eat, but right now there isn't.
No, there isn't.
So to speak, and so award them a bunch to protect them till next year. I mean, I see where you're coming from, but thinking that I'm glad all those people went to see them wild little animals, but they did drive into Logan for a meal, you know? And they can't help that. That's just, that's just the way it is. Ordinarily, they do.
I live right out there where baby animals go up and down the road, and it was maybe thirty percent of what it usually is. And so not only, not only did they, their revenues will be way down, and there's no question that we want to keep that going, but, you know, they took a real hit on it as well.
One of the things that we had to consider also was that USU, of course, closed down their housing for a lot of the summer visitors, and so, you know, there, of course, goes revenue, too. So there was a lot of factors involved.
Might be glad we got a whole bunch of money left over to.
Yeah.
If there won't be a lot next year, at least there'll be less.
You understand that word?
Yeah.
Sounds like you were very wise.
Yeah. This is a question I've been gonna ask, and I never remember until you just said that. Does USU Housing pay RAPS tax? Do they, uh, hotel tax?
Transit, yeah.
Or is that just college housing?
No, I, yeah, that's a good question. I know the Echols Inn, or what do they call it?
The Indus.
Indus, but I don't know.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The dorms and all the, a lot of those.
That's where they stay.
Good question. I'll have to find that out.
But the apartments with the LE that are off-campus, you know, like Old Farm, they get a lot of the summer citizens, and they would pay the TRT.
Oh, I know that, but we always talk about how much they give us in.
Hotels.
They don't stay in hotels.
It's the same thing as like every, you know, literally, what they're doing is they're just, you know, coming up here to stay and things like that. And so they really opt to.
And I think, I mean, as I was looking through these awards, and I appreciate the work that the committee's done, is it looks like, for something like Baby Animal Days, for example, right, they've got some fixed ongoing costs that they can't scale back. So being able to award them something to keep them in play is a lot different than, say, the Cruisin', where you can scale that up and down as necessary. If they hold it, they've got some costs. But if they don't, all those costs go away, or if you're Baby Animal Days, you can't get rid of the historical farm. You've gotta have that staff and maintenance and physical facilities. So being able to award the programs to have those ongoing fixed costs regardless of whether the events held or not, I think is pretty wise.
Well, Baby Animal Days was twice this year. They did a drive-through early, and then just the other day, they actually had animals there. The crowd that normally is there was way down, eighty, thirty percent. And the businesses, my wife works at Gosner's during Baby Animal Days, they just hate it because there's so many people in there buying cheese from out of town.
They hate that?
Notice that there was really too much difference from those days to other days when I just told you there wasn't too many people coming in Logan.
Well, I think the bottom line is, I think the committee's done a good job from my standpoint, wise in what you've done. And I definitely think that there are some venues that we need to support, even though they were not able to function this year, and keep them alive. They're important to our county. Okay, any other questions? John?
We did say thirty thousand fireworks, so.
Yes.
I didn't do that every year, so. We did.
No, I think we did have a request from Logan, they wanted to do fireworks on the twenty-third of July, but it was the opinion of our finance director that that is not really a tourism draw like the Fourth of July fireworks and the program. That, that is not really a tourism draw like the Fourth of July fireworks and, and the program, the entertainment there stating would be.
Yeah, the.
So we didn't feel like it qualified.
And it didn't come in on the deadline that we hold others to. That's another critical thing, you know, everyone else is held to a, you know, a March sixth deadline and to have that coming in after this type of thing.
We didn't have one and Betty was here to beg for forgiveness?
Not this year. So we're not going to, this is not approval as we, the council wanted us to get back and.
If you'd like to report on some of those events that were canceled and their requests, their requests for, for funding, we can put that together.
I think that would be helpful.
I think we need to give the public activity to know these events that were canceled, but we're still giving them anywhere. Is that money going? I think that's helpful to have that accountability.
All right.
A lot of that, though, we did look at the application. We, you could see as, as their money is allocated, where it is all going. A lot of it was, uh, some hard assets, you know, we need to keep going. Some of it was the personnel that they have to keep hired, keep going. Those kind of things. That's why we tried to, some were trimmed back so they could still, you know, keep their business alive and their events alive and then just try to get through it in a year. Uh, there were some that were actually, they mentioned that it was for the funding basically for the next year. In other words, they received two thousand and eighteen's and that would be, that would be able to take through this year. And, uh, yeah, they, uh, with, so this two thousand and twenties would probably then actually probably go for two thousand and twenty-one if they didn't hold the event this year. So they'll be able to catch that up in the next year.
Some of the applicants for this year don't have their actual event until early in twenty twenty-one.
There was one in there that kind of, maybe they could do a double take and that was where we were funding the school district on the bridge. Explain that one, not quite.
That was not, not eligible.
Yeah.
They applied, they applied.
They applied, but it was not.
Not eligible.
I guess I should have looked a little closer when I got.
Okay.
Thank you, Greg. Okay, next item, uh, we've got three public hearings that we need to set for two of them for June the ninth, one of them for June twenty-third. Need to set a public hearing for, uh, ordinance twenty twenty dash zero seven, the North Pine Canyon Ranch Rezone. And a public hearing on June ninth also for ordinance twenty twenty dash zero eight, Pinnacle Estates LLC Rezone. Any questions on any of those? The information was in our packet and, uh, I think it was fairly straightforward.
I'll make a motion to set the two public carries.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay, we also have another public hearing, a resolution twenty twenty dash twelve, opening the twenty twenty budget.
Uh, is that going to be at the same time as six or is the time?
Let's change the time to five thirty.
No.
Can we do that?
Oh, there you go.
We changed the date. I guess we're six o'clock. I won't be able to beat the age record. Okay, we'll leave it at six o'clock.
I'll move that we set up a public hearing for the opening of the twenty twenty budget, um, June ninth at six P M.
Twenty-third.
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 Oh. Whatever the change may.
The twenty-third.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, are there any opposed?
Thank you. All right, item number twelve, pending action item, approval of a tax cancellation request. I thought this was interesting as we read through it. Anything, uh, let's see, Karen's not here. Nobody from office is here. Uh, any questions on, on that item? The, uh, from Kathleen Alstred, a letter for anybody who's here interested in what we're doing, but to make concern, we are writing this letter asking that the taxes, I'll leave the name out, be canceled. The individual passed away in two thousand and nineteen. Spoken with attorney, informed that there's no money left in the probate when he passed away.
Uh, I don't think they passed away.
The one I'm looking at.
I don't think they left.
No, the, the.
The tenant did. The tenant left, but not, but not the property owner. The tenant left and, uh, but the property owner passed away and, uh.
Well, aren't we talking about two different things? I have, I have.
You don't have the letter?
Oh, there's, yeah, there's, yeah.
Are there two different items?
There are two different items.
Oh, yeah, they are. Okay.
Might want to refresh.
Okay. There's two, two items, I guess. Well, uh, rather than read through both of these councils, this is a matter that we don't have to have a public hearing on. We can make the decision our own. Is there any, uh, question or discussion needed on these two items? As I read through them, uh, the request is, uh, well, it makes sense. It's not much else we can do.
But we know Kathleen's always collecting taxes and when she says she wants to cancel, it's probably a legitimate thing. There's any way to do that. So do you want a motion?
Yes.
Fairly make a motion. Go ahead and cancel the, uh, the tax request on these, uh, these two individuals.
Okay, all in favor of a motion?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Okay.
It's probably one of those things that would cost us more to find that equipment to.
Yes.
Sit down, let it go a tax.
Don't want to limit the taxes on that.
And it's where they vacated and let up the county, uh, we'll let you, uh, county out.
Okay, item number thirteen, initial proposals for consideration of action. We have resolution twenty twenty dash ten. Declaring the county's intent to pick up the tier two public safety employees' contributions to the Utah State Retirement System. Amy, can you address this for us?
I can.
Thank you.
Okay, um, so I'm going to give you a little bit of a background on our Utah Retirement System and a little bit of a history lesson. So that you can understand where this is all coming from and where we need to go. So, um, our quick overview, our tier one, uh, Utah Retirement System employees include any employee that was hired before two thousand and eleven. In this system, the tier one system, they receive a two point five percent average of the three highest paid years. Plus two percent of their years over twenty as part of their retirement plan. And this is a pension only. Okay, so then, um, the tier two system was established in two thousand and eleven. And it's different than the tier one, um, in that one point five percent average of the five highest paid years is what their retirement is based off of. And those employees that were hired after two thousand and eleven that are in the tier two system have a choice between a defined benefit and also, or a defined contribution. The defined benefit, um, is a pension plus a four O one K, um, contribution if the current contribution rate is below twelve percent. So today currently the contribution rate is eleven point two six percent. And so that would make a four O one contribution rate of point seven four percent and that's how we get the total of twelve percent. Okay? Um, if that contribution rate, um, goes above the twelve percent, um, and that's what's determined of what it needs to fund the retirement system. If that needs to go above the twelve percent, um, then the employee is responsible for that current contribution rate. The defined contribution plan on the tier two system is a straight four O one K contribution and that's of twelve percent. Okay, so that's the difference between the two. Yes, John?
Okay, the twelve, eleven, ten, whatever that percentage may be, that is based on their wage today.
The, um, percent, the percentage, is that what you're?
The contribution four O one K contribution goes.
So the twelve, the twelve percent would be based off of, yeah, what they're making today. We contribute twelve percent.
Twelve percent of what I made.
Right, yes.
And then the one and a half is the percent that we take of the.
The five highest paid years and that would be what their retirement is when they retire.
So I'm lost. They get that plus the four O one K, they get one or the other.
So they can choose the defined benefit plan and that would be the pension, um, or they can choose the defined contribution plan and that would be the four O one K.
Yeah, they can have one or the other.
Correct, yep. Uh, within the first year of employment, that tier two employee has to make that choice and it's irrevocable. So they can't go back and forth. Once they choose, they're in the system and that's it. Okay?
And then the one that's, the one point five pension is responsible that goes over there, there's a close over there, right?
Uh, I don't understand your question.
The one that's one point five every year, is that state retirement?
Yes.
So, so if they lose, if they, when the economy went down, stock market went down, we have to bring that to hold as before. But if they add it in the four O ones, they're maybe, right?
Right, yes, yes. So here's your history lesson. Back in the two thousand and nineteen legislative session, Senate Bill one twenty-nine was passed. Um, and this goes into effect July first, um, and it applies to new and current tier two public safety and firefighter retirement system. Um, the employer contribution is increased to fourteen percent. So today it's twelve percent, but on July first it will raise to fourteen percent. And that's the employer contribution. Um, additional contributions needed to fund the plan is the responsibility of the employee. And currently the additional cost for the tier two defined benefit hybrid plan is two point two seven percent. Okay? So now we fast forward to our twenty twenty legislative session that just happened and Senate Bill fifty-six was passed. What happens with this is it allows for the employer to choose to pick up that two point two seven percent of that employee share. So if we choose to do that, we must take a formal action. So it has to be a resolution in council meeting, hence the reason I'm here. Um, it does not allow for a cash or a deferred election right. So they can't say, nope, I don't want you to do that. Just give me the cash. It doesn't allow for that. And it does have an immediate vesting of the employer pickup. So they don't have to wait four years for that money to be invest, to be vested. It's vested immediately. So that means that if they, if it gets vested and they're here for a year, um, they would be able to take that money with them, that two point two seven percent. Okay? Um, if we choose to do the employer pickup, um, it requires an equal contribution from the employer for the defined contribution and also for the defined benefit hybrid. So anyone who's in the tier two public safety firefighter, um, plan. Okay? So what does this all mean for Cache County? I'll break it down for you. So we have a two percent increase and that's mandated. So we have sixty-three employees that are in the tier two public safety and firefighter plan right now. Fifty-three of those are in the defined benefit. Ten of those are in the defined contribution plan. That's what they chose in their first year of employment. So for that two percent increase that's mandated, the total annual cost for current employees is fifty-five thousand, six hundred dollars. So that's something that we just, we need to put in the budget. Cameron has already budgeted for that and, and we're good with that. Okay? Um, that's not something that we get to choose. This is where we get to choose is the two point two seven percent increase. So it can either be paid by the employee or optional by the employer. If the employer chooses to pick up the two point two seven percent increase instead of the employee paying for that, um, what's mandated is that there has to be an equal contribution. Um, and so basically all tier two employees would, we would have to pay that two point two seven percent for. So that would be sixty-three employees at the two point two seven percent is sixty-three thousand dollars. Okay? Total of the two point two seven percent, yes.
And of the fifty-five as well.
So now we have our total annual cost with the mandated increase and the pickup would be a hundred and eighteen thousand, six hundred dollars. Dot, 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 for now. Okay? Keep that in mind. Because, um, everyone who was hired into public safety going forward, if they have never been in the U R S system, um, would be coming in as a tier two employee. So what I put together is attrition for public safety over those, the last, um, three and a half years, if you will. So that's twenty twenty is to date. And you can see all of the tier one positions that, um, have, people have moved on or left or something like that. And how those have been replaced with tier two positions. So if we look at two thousand and seventeen, we had eighteen tier one people leave. And we had to replace those with eighteen tier two employees, right? Because tier one was no longer available unless they were already in that system. So you can look at that table and see where we're at. Um, I also put together down there at the bottom what we're looking at in the future. So our public safety employees, um, we have twelve employees that already have twenty plus years in the system. And so really they're eligible for retirement any day now. So they could choose to retire. Um, and we would have to fill those positions with more than likely tier two positions. Um, those that have fifteen to twenty years in the system are, there's twenty-nine employees. So we can see what we're looking at down the road in the next five years or so. And those that have ten to fifteen years, we have twenty-four, um, employees. And so those would be all tier ones that would be eligible for retirement in the next, um, ten years or so. So there are some tax implications for the employee. If the employer, um, picks up this two point two seven percent, then the tax is deferred. And they won't pay that until they receive their contributions as retirement benefits. Sorry, they won't have to pay that until they receive their, their contributions at retirement. Okay? If the employee pays that now, so the county chooses not to pick it up, then the employee would pay that tax now because it's an after-tax contribution. And it's at the time that the contribution is made.
Amy, I have a question.
Sure.
Uh, if they choose to leave before, you know, they reach tier two or whatever and they, and they're already invested, it's immediately vested. And they take that money, they are responsible for taxes on that if they spend it or can they reinvest it in another?
They could reinvest it.
But if they spend it, then they're responsible.
If they choose to take it as a payout and it's before retirement years, they would have a penalty and also the tax, yeah. So I did some research to see what other entities are doing. Um, and I think it's quite interesting. Um, out of all of the counties, the only county at this point that is not doing this pickup is Washington County. And the only city, um, that I was able to, as I polled the different cities, that is not doing that is Logan City. So, um, and then we can see that everyone is doing the two point two seven percent except for the state of Utah. And they chose to do a two percent rather than the full two point two seven percent. So a few things that we need to.
There is the option then to just do a partial pickup.
Yes, there is.
And the difference that it has made by the employee.
Correct. So for the state of Utah where they chose to do the two percent, the employee would need to do the point two seven percent is what they would pay. So the things that we need to consider is if this amount continues to increase, do we continue the pickup? So, um, to make that perfectly clear in our resolution, um, the resolution states that we would pick up a hundred percent of the two point two seven percent. And that's what's been recommended by the compensation committee as we discussed this. Um, and the reason that it's worded that way is so that if it, next year it does go to three percent or four percent or five percent, it doesn't lock the county into that. But it gives us the opportunity to review it again and determine if we want to, uh, make an adjustment to that or keep it the same of the two point two seven percent.
Amy, let's see, next year, uh, we're do a readjustment. Can we go down what we? Amy, let's see, next year, and we're do the readjustment, can we go down what we put in, below what we put in the resolution?
You cannot, you cannot decrease the amount in the future. It has to be, once we make a decision today, that's what we're locked into going forward. You can't decrease that. The other thing that we need to remember is that the bill also says that the pickup amount cannot be in lieu of wage increases. So we can't say, this year, we're gonna give the two point two seven percent to you through the URS system, but we're not gonna give you a wage increase. That cannot be part of this discussion. It says that the wage increases must be in line with historical increases. So like what we've done in the past, our sheriff's office has a step and grade pay scale, and we followed that through, and so that would still need to continue as budgets allow, of course, but it couldn't, it couldn't be that we put the two point two seven percent in, so now there's no wage increases, so.
So basically, the state's mandated, they get a five percent of retirement increase, and you get none?
Yeah.
Isn't that basically what it is? So, so they're already one point five, right? So what's this give them?
It would, it would, it puts them up to the two percent, yeah.
Twenty percent, and you get one?
I think what's happening, there's a state's retirement fund that is not being funded, but it needs to be, so.
It didn't help anybody out with them.
Yeah, this is just public safety, just public safety, and so. Right, and one of the conversations that we had in our compensation committee that I'm not gonna review today, because I feel like it could be part of another discussion, but is the consideration that we need to look at, how that goes with our public employees, and is that equitable? And so, and John is saying, no, and I'm gonna stay neutral.
The fifteen percent was based on the fact they didn't retire after twenty years, because it's stressful. And I agree it's stressful, I would wanna do it, I agree with all of that, they worked for thirty years, and now we're gonna hire some more, so now they're gonna get twenty percent. I don't think it is equitable.
Right, so one of the, one of the thoughts and one of the considerations that we wanted to bring forward in the compensation committee was, if this were to go to legislation for our public employees next year, we would need to probably do the same type of pickup, if that were to go to legislation, if there was to be an increase for the public employees. And so keep that in mind as we're talking about this, because, you know, I feel like everyone should probably be treated fairly in what the county is given, type of thing, so.
So why, now, we're talking about, you know, hundred fifty thousand, two hundred thousand, if they do have an increase, not counting wage increases.
Right.
So you're up to, you know, three, three hundred fifty thousand dollar increase in wages in two years, not counting what you give them with the, what we agreed to. And I think that's an awful lot of money, especially if next year we don't have.
Yeah, okay, so the overview of costs here, this just kind of wraps it all, everything that we just talked about wraps it all up together, so that we can see what the current benefit is there in that first column, what the new benefit will be beginning July 1st, and then what that cost is to cash county. So we can see the current benefit is a one point five percent multiplier, and then it moves to a two percent multiplier. The cost to the county is zero for that. The employer funds benefit right now is at twelve percent, and then it will move to fourteen percent. This is a required amount, so it will be going up fifty-five thousand six hundred dollars. And that covers all tier two employees in public safety and firefighter. And then, right now, the employees are currently not required to contribute to the fund, because the pension contribution rate is less than the twelve percent employer cap. But then it says, based on today's pension contribution rate, employees would add about two point two seven percent of their pay to fund the pension benefit. Employees may choose to pick up their employer contrib, the employee's contribution. So if we chose to do that, that would be the optional fifty-two thousand four hundred dollars. However, if we choose to do that, then we also need to pick up the same for the 401K option, or the defined contribution option, is what it's referred to, and that would be an additional ten thousand six hundred. So the total for that, if the county chooses to do the employee pickup, would be one hundred eighteen thousand six hundred dollars. So what we need to decide tonight, or possibly before July 1st, if you choose to think on this, is to decide yes to pick it up, or no to pick it up. If it's yes, then is it the full two point two seven percent, or is it a different percentage? The resolution, as it is written, that's in your packets, is the two point two seven percent, but that can be changed if you choose to change that.
This has to be done before July 1st?
If it's not done before July 1st, we can postpone that, let's say if we decided to put that into effect on January 1st, 2021, we could do that, however, that would mean that the employee would pay that beginning on July 1st, and the county could not go back and retro that back. So it's when the county decides to put that in that it goes forward, it does not go back. Lots to think about.
Yeah, in fact, I don't know how the rest of the county, the commission.
Council feels.
But I, I need some time to move over this.
Yeah, I think we all simply because we don't have much money.
No, we don't.
Everybody's really worried about the, the follow-through hereout with all of the employees. Because it's, it's, it's gonna just like bang and compound, and then all of a sudden.
The other thing to consider, though, also.
Like you said, we can't do wage increases, or we can, we have to keep up a certain, then you start going retirement wage.
Right.
Because every bit that we put here does take out their state take home pay.
Mm-hmm, it does.
Because in the end, you know, there's only so many five million dollars to rest to work with, you know? We'll, we'll, like, how much less than we can give on an increase overall.
Right, if the employee does, if we don't pick it up, and the employee has to pay it, then it does affect their, their bottom dollar, their, their amount that they are taking home. And so they could perceive that as a possible pay decrease as well.
But it wouldn't, if you picked up point two, 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 seven of it, if you give them what you start out with, and then it wouldn't cost them a dime, and they wouldn't get the increase in their retirement by doing it themselves, but it wouldn't affect their take home at all.
It could a little bit, yeah, with that point two seven percent.
And you pick up point two seven, and that's just a two point two seven, yeah.
I see what you're saying. The other thing is, we need to consider morale as well. I think that if we look at this, and we look at the two point two seven percent, and every other county but one is doing that, it's showing that our employees, that we do value them. However, if we choose not to do that, what's that message that's sending to them? And so we need to consider that as well.
I'm also very interested, this is when they made the decision, was this back in January, February?
So it would have been during the legislative session. But it also would have been, oh, when the counties have made it? No, so the counties have all made their decision within the last four weeks or so, that's when I've done that research. The cities may have done that sooner, because they're on a different budget schedule than the counties are, but the counties have all done that within the last four weeks or so. I'm happy to send this PowerPoint to you.
Just gonna ask if you would send that to us.
There's also a little snippet out of the Utah Retirement System Newsletter that they send, that does a really good job about explaining this as well, that's where I got this graph here. And so I can send that to you as well. There's also, there was a Zoom webinar that was done, that's only fifteen minutes, I can send you that link as well, if you want to review that. That way, you'll have all the information that I've had, and you'll be able to make an educated decision that way.
That would certainly help me.
Great.
Yeah, yeah. All right.
Any other question?
I guess not. Thank you, Amy.
I, would it, do we have some employees that are here, or they all tier ones? I was just kinda wondering, like, I guess we just talk off maybe this.
Yeah, I think that would make more sense.
I know when we were in the committee, Sheriff Jensen is on the compensation committee, his only concern was, is when this first hit down the law's edge front, down that country, there was a lot of scrambling going on, because those, those deputies and those different people, they were changing, they were changing employment like you can't believe, and they just had to keep ba-da-ba-da-ba-da, to get everything to calm down. We didn't get that up here, but he said, it's interesting that Logan City's not offering it, but if we were to offer it, that would be a feather in our hat to keep our public safety people. And so that's another thing we need to look at. I mean, the bottom line is, you're talking five percent increase for, or point two something increase, we do this. And that's before we start considering wage increases.
I think that'd be nice to look at, too, if you're looking at retirement accounts, which is where the, from a wage standpoint, the citizens say, no, we're all over the wage, the Logan City's paying.
He said that Logan City offers about, I could be wrong, and I shouldn't even say anything, it was like a dollar, a dollar and a half per hour starting. About ours.
And they don't pay social security?
Yeah, they do, they have houses, too.
Yeah, and so they don't pay that, so they don't.
He was concerned, I'll say.
I think it's a concern, you just gotta.
You gotta decide where we wanna be.
Yeah, it's. I, I feel worse for the other employees.
Mr. Chairman, I suggest that we take a listen, and let us think about it a while.
Yeah, it's not anything that we need to have a motion on, or make action on, so we'll do that, and put it on the agenda for next week, or next meeting. Okay, our next item, yes.
Could you, for the next meeting, just for my own curiosity, what that would be, say, all employees got a two percent?
Amy, did it mention that maybe in our next legislation, in a few months, that they'll do all employees? And so I think we might as well look at this, as what we're gonna be doing in another year. Because that's probably what's gonna happen, there'll be enough pressure that they'll do it.
Okay, let's move on, thirteen B is Resolution 2020 dash eleven, resolution to create a cash county economic development advisory board. We have with us, and thank you for making the trip up, Rebecca Dilch, who's the state advi, are the state advisor to this, is that what your proper title would be?
State, yes, the governor's office, the governor's government, and I'm in the office of the rural government, so it's free. That office, that this is being administered through.
Okay, thank you. All right. We don't have a copy of that resolution, so I can't really describe what the resolution says. What's that? Uh-huh. Well, I apologize, I haven't read it in advance on what it says, but.
I don't see it on mine, did it just get posted?
Yeah, I just refreshed, and then it showed up. Would you mind, thank you, John?
Some legislation in this last session created the rural. What's the title?
Rural County Grant.
Yes, Rural County Grant Program, where rural counties, which is class three through class six counties, can apply for grants to help with economic development. To be able to apply for the grant, you have to have an economic development advisory board to, to help do the applications, and then give recommendations on how to use the grant, and I'll give it this, give it. The resolution, or, the resolution tracks the language of the new statute in terms of what the composition of the board has to look like. There have to be at least five board members, and from, it defines the initial, the mandatory five board members. This council appoints them, the county council can appoint additional board members, and that's reflected in the resolution. As you appoint those, you can take gender and other factors into consideration, gender diversity and other factors into consideration in appointing board members. So the resolution really just says we'd like to participate, be able to apply for grants, we'll create it the way the statute says that it should be created. And then I just plugged in some initial languages of how the board would operate, that they elect from among themselves a chair, elect a vice chair. Terms would be, initial terms, the half of the board would get two-year terms, half of the board would get four-year terms, result with some rotation, and they act when a quorum is present, just some basic rules to get them going, that's what's in the resolution.
John? For the grants, is the board who applies for the grant, or do they have a person that will apply for the grant on behalf of the board?
I've not dug into those details, and I think our state representative could probably speak to the mechanics better. I can speak to the language of the resolution.
Would you mind just coming to the microphone, thank you. We'd hate to come all this way and not be able to say anything.
Wow, I appreciate that very much. I actually just live down in Willard, so it's not too far. I live in a rural county, too, that's why they, they elected me, and I'm excited to be able to support the rural counties. So this is interesting legislation, there's two parts to this grant. In part A, gives two hundred thousand dollars to every county of the rural counties, and this fund is administered through the governor's office of economic development, is overseen by the governor's rural partnership board. And so these funds, to be able to use them, there's specific areas where they are to be used. And just to rattle off really quickly, business recruitment, development, and expansion, workforce training and development, and infrastructure, and capital facilities improvements for business development. So of course, the idea of it is for business development, jobs, economic development, growth in the rural counties. There, this first year, the two hundred thousand dollars will come with, if a CED board is formed. We have an acronym already, how about that? So this county economic development board is an advisory board, and you will have the last say as to how these funds are spent. In this application, they would like to see the plans. So this, this is coming up really fast. This fund is, needs, will be available July 1, and you have a year. Don't quote me on that, you have a year to use it. It's to be used in that fiscal year, this fund is for the fiscal year. year to use it. It's to be used in that fiscal year. This fund is for the fiscal year. If it's not used, then you won't get the next fund until it is used ongoing. There won't be a match this first time around, but in 2021, there actually will be a match, and it's a tiered match, depending upon the size of the counties. He mentioned, you've got the third, fourth, and fifth, and sixth-class counties. You are, of course, right now, still a third-class county, still remain eligible for these funds, and will need to match 40% next year. And then there is a Part B grant, which has not been developed yet, but that will be competitive. So this first $200,000 will just be given to the counties, and accounting reporting will be given in 2021. And based on what you chose, your reporting can predict or might influence or affect the way the competitive grant is awarded. This year, there are 4.6 million funds that's ongoing, that the legislature has set aside, so that's almost the $200,000. They're gonna have to come up with a few thousand to make that even. But there's 3.4 million that is one-time funding. They're hoping to get it to become ongoing funding, but 3.4 million for every county, and you can get up to another $600,000, but it's competitive. So there certainly is another $600,000 to go around to every county. That's basically it.
When you say it's competitive, does that mean, you know, we put a plan together, or the board puts a plan together saying what we're going to use these funds for, then it goes to a state board who reviews that, and then they make the choice on that?
Yes, yes. And that is the Governor's Rural Partnership Board. It's comprised of different entities, from agriculture to tourism. At large, we have the Utah Association of Counties represented on it, couple of universities, Utah State Extension. So it's a seventeen-member board. And that has not all been determined how that's going to be administered, though. Whether it will be the entire board, whether there will be a selection committee, but it will be running through the Governor's Rural Partnership Board. However, administered at the level of the Governor's Office of Economic Development.
Has that board been selected already, all seventeen members?
Yes, yes, that's an ongoing board. They've actually been organized for a number of years. So this is a new project for them. In the past, the executive committee from that board has reviewed the rural fast-track grants, so you may be familiar with those. Some of your cities here were eligible for that. The rural fast-track grant has been eliminated, so this is a replacement for that. Some counties are considering modeling that. We will have our own rural fast-track grant. We would like to see the money go directly to business expansion, business growth. The BEAR program, the Business Expansion and Retention Program, has been eliminated, and this has taken its place. So that is focused on business expansion. Some of the counties may want to continue doing that. This is giving the counties more control, more say, because as the old saying is, once you've met one rural county, you've met one rural county, right? Where rural counties, but not the same at all, and they have different needs and different ways to, this is to be, can be utilized, under the parameters of economic development, business growth, job creation, workforce development.
This is like, there's basically twenty-four counties then?
Yes.
That are, that are not competitive, that would actually compete, right?
Yes. And that's for Part B. So the Part A, you're, you're gonna, you'll get.
Yeah, but that's really, as far as the rural counties, it's twenty-four out of the twenty-nine rural counties. And my next question was also, is that we currently have had, you know, an economic development committee that's been working, doing a lot of things. I was just wondering how closely we mirror, looking at the advisory board. I kind of look down through there. I know we have quite a few that you mirror pretty close to what we need.
We try to, as a SVIDA, mirror that board, because right now, we're trying to get that up and going and that kind of thing. We thought it'd be good if there was that integration, where they were virtually the same people on SVIDA Executive Board as we're on this board. That makes sense to us, to correlate.
You're ahead of the game here in this county.
So it might be wise, if we wanted to put that maybe in the resolution, that we consider members of, in a point, in making appointments, we consider members of the Executive Committee of the Cash Economic Development Alliance?
I don't know, but that has to be in the resolution. I'd say we just, you know, when we put this together, I think that's the way to, we do a kind of...
For the long term, maybe, as future councils come on board, I think it'd be wise to have something like that in there, if that's the way that we want to go, which I think would be wise.
So part of the application process is to show the minutes of this meeting, or wherever you're making the motion, establishing the members of that board. And then you'll be submitting the names and contact information of those boards, board members. But they will be working closely with you and advising the council that will make the ultimate decision as to how these funds or projects are completed.
I know the board has to be created by July 1. Does that include, meant the appointments, or if they have a resolution in place for the last, or in both?
Okay, so what you, what I would recommend, and that we wanted to get this information, information as quickly as possible, certainly, once again, the COVID-19 has really set everything back. We certainly didn't expect all of a sudden to be sent home and working from home, and then having to be reassigned duties, working on the Utah leads loans and trying to get those distributed. We were all given different jobs. And this was ongoing, but we sent out an email recommending that this, these boards be created soon. The funds actually, the application will actually open June 1. And the funds, we would like to see distributed July 1. So that would mean your board needs to be built now, as soon as possible. Yeah, you can do it right now.
And so my question is, by passing the resolution, since there is a word created and the council will appoint its members, we, if they pass that resolution tonight, even if they have a million members?
Okay, so, and our deadlines are soft, just so you're aware as well. We're just wanting to get the funds to the counties as quickly as possible. So we have a soft deadline of June the nineteenth, to have the applications in for, for the funds, to get that $200,000. This is just the Part A. The Part B, just don't worry about that one. We'll address that one a little bit further down the road. But this Part A, if you don't make it to June 19th, just as soon as you can.
I guess on his, I go, to go with your question, is that, for example, when it says the county representative, you want a name on that application?
Yes.
Or we just say county representative?
There, we need a name on the application.
So we need, we need to have those specific needs instead of your ASAP, because they go, put it in the application. We have a good five days to get it done.
That's right. Right. We, we set a date of June the nineteenth. As I said, we had certainly expected to get this all out sooner too, but, yeah.
I think it's a great thing, and I, I think like G mentioned earlier, I think we were like, the way we've been working, the way we've had quite a group that's been heavily involved, and already working with the county as a whole, and we've had several meetings with the governor, everything on it with the same committee, it's been pretty fascinating.
And realize that these, this five member is just a minimum. So, I mean, you can certainly have more than, some counties don't have anything like this. And so for them, to come up with five, especially in the smaller counties...
Far better if it's all five people in the county.
That's right.
No, seriously, if it's small county like that, they...
It is a challenge, yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay.
Any other questions for Rebecca?
Thanks.
Thank you again so much for coming. You've helped a lot.
We always enjoy coming up and asking.
Oh, good. Yep.
So as a SVIDA Executive Board, we thought some of our members, also, we were looking at that money to see if we could use a two hire economic director for the county. And we asked them, and they didn't say no. So that was gonna be our, our ask for that money. That was our plan. That's what our, our economic plan that we presented to the county calls for. By the way, we forgot to put in that plan, so we need to see that.
As long as they're on tier three, yeah. Tier three, it would be tier three now, but...
I'm gonna consider that.
I guess the question I have is, it seems like we have, we would have two boards then, basically doing the same thing.
No, we just make the one board do both jobs.
That's what I'm thinking.
No, and if we clean out the board and others, whatever we need to do, and then basically we have one board.
Well, why don't we just merge that board into this?
We could, I think that would be, if you saw that, the executive, the executive board of the Cash Valley Economic Development Alliance is the same board.
And we have at least five of them, right?
Oh, yeah, yeah. We, we have more than five, and we meet all those requirements.
But that wouldn't matter.
No.
No, we can have more. I think it would be the wise thing to do is to make that the board for this.
Well, that's, that's my suggestion.
Well, it says on, on the resolution, it says at least the following members, so we could understand if you have them.
That's actually, would you...
Right, and so...
And so do we, on, on the executive board, do we have all these people represented?
We do. The one thing that we wanted to make sure that we had was a representative from the Department of Workforce Services, who don't want the SVIDA Executive Board. We thought that there might be somebody there that qualified for that, but we were thinking of adding somebody in there just to make sure we covered all these.
Add somebody, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I, I propose that we just merge our existing board in, into the, uh, the, the Economic Development Advisory Board.
No, resolution, we need to waive, waive the rules, and therefore, I, I move that we waive the rules, pass Resolution 2020-11. And at that point, I think our executive, we sit down and, and start getting this put together for us to approve at the next meeting.
Yeah.
If we're always gonna keep it the same, that it's this, that it's this SVIDA Executive Committee, do we need to put that in writing in this resolution? SVIDA is a function, it's kind of a weird hybrid. SVIDA is a function of the Chamber of Commerce, and need, the businesses need to be a member of the Chamber of Commerce to be a member of SVIDA. However, right currently, Jamie Andres is both the president of the Cash Chamber of Commerce, and she's also the County Economic Director. And so there's that integration there between the two. And certainly, we can rewrite the bylaws of SVIDA or whatever we need to do. Just kind of within ourselves, appointed the members who trust you were. So there wasn't a formal county process to choose them.
If, if you, you want to get this in place, you may want to just pass the resolution.
Yeah, my, my motion is that we, that we pass resol, that we waive the rules and pass Resolution 2020-11. And then we work through the details with our executive. I don't think we have to have that within the resolution. I think we should...
And we want to formalize that later, that they would all these board laugh.
We could do that later, okay.
If we get it too narrow up on this, we may not, we may not fulfill our own standards and such, so.
Is there a second to the motion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Thank you. And thank you again, Rebecca. All right. Our next item is thirteen C, Planning and Commission Bylaws and Rules of Procedure Amendment. Chris, he's already on his way up here.
I'm here if you have questions. It seems pretty straightforward. This is on the off chance, we have to have electronic meetings again. We'll be prepared before it happens. We've had one electronic meeting with our Planning Commission. Part of that state requirement was as soon as possible, we amend those bylaws, and that requires to come to council.
Okay. I read through that. I didn't find anything that was concerning. Yeah, that's all that.
Very straightforward. Yes.
Maybe I missed something, but, um, when I was looking in 662, this says provision may be made for, followed with a monitor and all the meaning. But there are times where there might be an electronic meeting where there's a public hearing before the Planning Commission. Would that need, would that language need to change to participate, monitor, or participate, or something in case the public had to participate in a, in a public hearing electronically?
So this one is specific to public meetings, not specific to public hearings. So this is making the clear statement that e- even if it is a public hearing, that should still be able to be monitored. For a public hearing, I'm gonna look at that really quick, because that's a good question to make sure we've covered public hearings. With the exception of a public hearing, it says further down under 662, the general public and other interested persons need not be provided an opportunity to participate in, as opposed to attend and monitor an electronic meeting. So it's, it's intended to indicate that even if you're gonna have a public meeting with no public hearing, they still have to be able to monitor. As soon as you step into the public hearing realm, they have to be able to comment.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. This isn't a resolution, but we need to adopt, I guess, this amendment.
Yes, please.
It's a amendment to our...
To the bylaws of...
Planning Commission bylaws and rules of the Commission.
Do we need to waive the rules on this one? No. Okay, then all of you, that we approve the Planning Commission bylaws and rules of procedure amendment.
Say.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Thank you, Chris. Okay, we now need to move to an executive session to discuss a couple of Utah code items. Do we have a motion to move to executive session?
Some issues to the executive session.
Second up?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, now move to executive session.
There's something else?
Were you? I just figured you saw a way out. You took it. Oh, I saw a way out. How's your...
How's graduation? How's graduation?
Only idiot, so... Pretty exciting now that I'm old man.
It was, it was early on.
You just do fun, let it get boring. Let it get boring.
Here, one of that one, give him a prayer.
Um, we would have asked me, and of course I've been involved in Svida, so I'd like to see that.
Yeah, I remember my grandma, so I had to go to the library.
What do I suppose changing?
I know, we're very, very... There's some small room.
Many old, many, many... Who was in trouble, we were talking to you.
I thought this was red, kinda bad, can you...
No, she would keep holding it down.
Oh, that's...
I excluded.
That's new, yeah.
So it's...
Believe me, I'm tired.
Oh, I'm tired, so...
Well, my question for this, uh, if you, if I could, if we're in a situation, actually, we...
I mean, I just, we're always...
Well, it's a great, we, we can't, we can't operate especially well. So we looked at that since then, like, um, you know, in summer, just like, you know, whatever, I guess, sometimes. Um, we had a couple that one, like, there's one like, um... But ones that were like, I don't know, you know, it was some of that, some can, some can't. That depends on how they were classified, who they were, who they had called that. So I just always, it's just... I'm just, I'm just trying to think of how we're gonna do that now.
To the, to the council.
On every application, bros. Okay, we're in war, so, well, I'm...
Should I take that to the meeting?
I would be sorry.
'Cause you have sent out emails to us to the explanations, so you could just review the ones that are different from four.
Yeah, but they kind of want everyone, so they want, they want, well, they want the ones that are rewarded that they feel are questionable.
But it's nice to get a call, but it is, and they want to see the ones that have been, that they're watching out for. So if, if there was like online, that was, this was tourism, probably could use, but it wasn't on our record.
I should have, uh, but... Um, yeah, so, you know, we did a lot of, we did a lot of ones that were just in that culture.
Uh, although I think that's a thing, well, because there is a, there's a...
Certain consideration doesn't really, it's not...
So probably just go back and, and show it, and...
And that, that's...
They're gonna, they're gonna ask us a question, they can come back and argue that. Um, or a category, so like, here are the ones that we need to land, so we could have them in a, you know, this.
Well, no, it's, no, we did that, we kind of did that.
All right, yeah.
Yeah, we kind of, so, yeah.
So we break those categories, because our funding is, so you have the rats, the rats, and the rats, rats, and...
Yeah, this is the, and there are some, some, some... First, so this is the cultural, this is the one that really is the ones that... These are, so... Oh, yeah, so it's these guys, these are the ones that... And so I can send that, uh, but I think there would be more cultures that, um, that would be... Uh, but still, here also, I mean, right, it's, it would, it would, so we're more, we're not... Because we didn't have some other one there because... So we could work, because we're not in a pond, and we're canceled. And we can figure out what people can, that's not, no, so we are ready for your work on that, so...
I mean, so...
More of a time to talk than usual. I think this one is, is, I, I really, I was just, um, like, I had... I'm pretty happy for, yeah.
But I love, but I love it, it's keeping, keeping them all, so I'm close to that.
Uh, except this, um, I mean, children were nice this year, because this is so...
I was impressed, I can't be aware of one, um, because they get on so much to our, every... Of course, so, so...
I appreciate that, I appreciate that, I appreciate that, I think about our experience.
Oh, like, through the application, like... It's actually a lot of, that I love seeing how someone is doing their own classification, and how people are being created, but then you can't see the pressure we're still to be, as creative as ever, and it all... But, but this is, it's just, it's a lot of... Waiting. Capitalizing, there, capital a lot.
I know.
Yes, there's none of them.
I figured that out.
But those are mine to go for, for actually asking them.
This year, I accepted.
It's, uh...
And... I already did, but it's so... Uh, so some of it was not great, because they sent me, uh, word blogs that had passwords and, and I'm like, yeah. I know, it's not like you have to download something, and I can't do that. So it's like, yeah, you're gonna have to, you're gonna have to...
Yeah.
So it's not about, I was in fact, and then we got full attachments, and then some of the things, this question, um, five. So it wasn't as clear as I, I was like, would you just say, how do you, what's the country for our customer?
Um, and I was like, oh, you have, or could we have sales? Why would it...
The state is for humanization, so...
Like, how, and then do you get a base?
Or you got a lot of something, it's like, for the years, for the...
So, I, I was answering, because that's what the state, they just cut it, put their, uh, first time, and it also... I don't know, just...
It's very, very...
Well, it's very, very... Being cast, it was casted, so, so the fee was something, and they let us put a moratorium on the classification.
Well, they have time to review it, because we are...
The population market, so they set us all, and we'd be really, so, so, because we're, we're not there. We have moves, we go...
See that for the population, we are...
If you look, and it turns around, it's sort of, it's sort of agriculture, um, access to the, and structure, all the other things. Uh, how, how, like, bourbon years, so it's more than beer. It doesn't make sense, it's classic, and it's, and it's just... We're not, yeah. And so I think that that was the idea, was we're the only ones doing it. Whoa, whoa, wait a minute, that's, actually, we're not, well, we're gonna go celebrate our very population, or whatever. So I'm, I'm, they were, but, uh, yeah, 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 because we could do it fast. No, but technically, and I, you know, like, as a county of, uh, of, um, you guys, like, more rural counties, they're actually higher laws. Because of reform by, right, so they're higher laws. For our population. This is the first bus, and that's all, six, seven. That's right. So, now you know, I come with us to scan, but...
Did you always scan?
So that's the same in the eighties, from ninety, from ninety, and then... Thirteen, so, like, Iron Hills, they said, and so the... Yeah, 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 so, so, it's not...
But, um, I actually, we were, for the beginning, back to, but I don't know, it's, it's kind of...
So the... And... So, so, here's... So you lost, uh, a little bit, yeah, I think about it more, but, but if I... Yeah, I'm a hundred, yeah, so, kind of, I'm smart. Uh, yeah, I got a position, I'm already... And it's, you know, I think it's just about, it's, it's, really, it's like, the worst...
I can never go in a wall. And how it's gonna be, you know, so, there's, there's basically that.
And it's just a sudden, because, um, Alsa and, 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 and... And it's, you know, right, and, 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 right, and, and, so... That one was basically closer, because they didn't have it announced, so, but once I was moved out, they started to stay there, they moved out. So, and of course, you had a five, two years, and then you had, you had, so, you wanted to spend, you could take all the AP classes you wanted, and you could take any... And, and the buses, and the buses, and the power buses, but I got them all, um, so... And I was, like, I had a, but I wouldn't, I don't think...
I don't like to drive, I said, to...
And, and you know, I think you're native, so... You have four different angels, baby.
But I, I haven't been angel now, so you told me, somebody told me, or, you know, you'll never be accepted by your show. And I thought, that's, and, and, there's, 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 there's... You can see, um, well, that's, yeah, also, not, so, so, it's, it's... But, yes, um, that is, there's, um, you know, I live here, and I, and I, and I, and I, so, I, I, you kind of, the, the... I can't... But also, I think, I think most of them are, uh, some other town, so...
Oh, they can have, you can have it all around, you know, so...
Oh, yeah, and, um, but I have relatives, I mean, my three grandparents, where I have cousins and, um, yeah. You know what, my, my son, how we, and other people, like, yeah, but, but, you know, I'm like, we just, her, like, yeah. Yeah, I like this so much, so, yeah, and you're flying, I'm, I'm, and my mom, she went to, uh, my best, and my sister, was...
Yeah. We're very...
Yeah. Ever. You'll. Still. And she's like, oh, look at that. And she stayed with, with. Okay, that's. I, I do not, I don't want to. I don't want to do that. I think we're wrong, right? So we should. There's. It's hot. So we're not, you get it. Okay? I'll leave it for it. Why don't I have to go to the. That's where, that's where. You're ready to go on. Oh, it's amazing. Who's a machine? Yeah, it's, uh. Yeah, so. It's, yeah, it's something. Yeah, and everything, everything I would take. He's got stuff too. He's got stuff. You have some kind of stuff. You know, always. Uh, you know, shoot the most. So, I hope so. So, but I do, except I need so. Good for you, so. Those are pretty nice. Yeah, I think that I need to stay. But I. Do you know what? Ponytail holder. Yes, put a ponytail holder in and sit check out. That's what we do. She needs a ponytail holder. Just all around stretching. Yeah. That's perfect. Yes, when I saw that on, um. Yeah, I'm wearing. And it has. Yeah. Third verse, part ten. Right, yes. I think those hands. And put it in the hole. And just put it in, sit down, over your chest. I'm gonna go, but then I'm actually telling you one, which would be perfect. So I don't need little, like, only other little. But, um, I think. And I have an orange. Oh. That's kind of like, I have a perfect range of us. One of those. Get this set. I think this is natural. I believe she said, I get this, so.
Did you just have? No, I had. Oh.
Wait, wait.
Yeah, she's quite scary.
That's making her look a posh. Yeah, it's making so bad. I think my name is video. I know, I have. I don't know, I do like. I don't want it anymore. You're, you don't. Just saying. See, I took it into, uh, fell over the wall and then you can't.
Do you have access to this?
I have no idea. She would have had to do it, I've got four times to do it. And then. She's been writing. You don't want to. That's why I think it will. You have a little more part in the hand. So the one I have is. The, uh, this is for her. I was. Yeah, but I did call it a TV, so I like that.
Yeah, that's true.
That was, that was a good one.
Crocheting.
Crocheting. And, uh, maybe with my. I did a present in there. And I was just, yeah, she finished all the day. Got me.
You just take it all. I don't even know what word she's using. They think all look like. You know, like, I need your.
Oh, how close. There's a quote, she's very helpful, yarn card. No, don't think it's not. She's, she's, she said, she said, um, a minute. And she missed, she was really late. Oh, nice. But she has three kinds of stash, she has a regular stash. And then she's going to do something. That's just the stash. You just have to. Then she has the mid range stash, which is the key to the stash, which is like. Remember, also, it's about that, it's the yarn. But the core stash does not need or need, doesn't need. No, I don't know if it's a basic. It's, it's just. Or just like, you know, blow up. They got it in. That's what I'm trying to say. You, you've got a.
I have.
I love. I just. I think. I think I should, I have the, like, teenagers, not like, and we are, it was. And I'm sorry, I didn't think of that. That, that I could give it. And then, then people start to give it, and I turn around, I'm like, oh. And then I'm like, I'm breathing. And then I'm like, oh, and then I'm like, oh. I have a. Can't find it. So you don't want to see it over here. But you know, if you're, actually, there's, there's, there's small, there's small. I just didn't know, like, you know, I just have the list. I have very much. I know we got it, and we got it to be announced, and it's not just something like that.
That's.
But not have one, and I'm happy. I'm a little. But first, first, you know, there's. I have. We have, uh, I have to get it. And she goes, oh. And she said, she said, she's like twenty three. Oh, she's horrible, so, uh, yeah, I. And she did all of it in this array over there, because the first thing I did, and we weren't doing it all day. But we started staggering. We hardly encountered each other. And, and then I have a half a project, so I've been around since the day. It's like, stop, we're bad, it's like a full up. We never had a chance to discover how people were living, so. So I was. A little, um, right, that they actually kind of. And all ours, you know, that was related to the permits, that's all those are, it's just my taxes and council and. There's just. And we got a, I don't know, I'm not sure. Um, and then, and then places. I just. But the longer the stretch is, the harder we are. So I'm, we've been having that, I have a relationship that I would, that will be. We're, it's, I'm hoping. I don't know, but it's. I mean, we need to be honest. And I don't. But it's just not really that important. Like, don't just seem like you're sleeping or what's needed. Because it's. You're gonna come send it on the other side of this, and you're gonna send it off, so we're gonna get a section. So, I'm not asking, I'm gonna be able to tell them who you're doing, but I just want to remember, do you want to know? How much do you? Or we can tell them about it. With the operating. Oh, it's. It's a time. I can almost. And I think it's. Just the first thing I do not. We started to keep that, like, between the. So that we could come back and say, here's what we did, did we, or did we? God's stuff, none of them, you do that time, it's a week. What about what you did, you said, or what you did, you said, or something? So maybe something, it's a little bad on, and people. There's so many people who are just. I think it's. But it's. It's like, it's like. Um, she, uh. And then they add. And then maybe they're. Yeah. You know, she's just. And you know what, we are kind of. We did. But this is, you're saying, well, you know, you want to have to pay for people. So my. Zero. Zero, also, I'm not a restaurant, but like, nothing, it's like, I'm getting in, and you're suggesting that I find races. And he's just, okay, um, um, then it reaches. Now, did you hear the first? Where he says, zero. And every. So that's, that's, that's like, you go, everyone, I think we're just five thousand percent, that's still zero. And what I want to do is, when it's, um, I don't know, that's a bounty, that we have a campaign across the whole country, this is a last one. Take one, one versus one, go to one more win, and you're only going, let's just. Yeah. But. We're like, can you just stand in the lane? And then I'm like, well, that's because. Everybody's in the pool, eating the breakfast, thinking, I think you, so, we don't want tissues or. Where's that? Yes, what you can, and then, we'll do it quickly. And we'll work with those. It'll take all of those weeks. Just a lot of energy. You could be very tired of doing like. You are. You are. Well, you're. You probably. I think you would. No, I always. Oh, my gosh, you're so bad. If you just. Oh, I know. You know, it would also. Just. It's such a mess. Yeah. And she's. I know. I'm glad you noticed, I think I can do, I think I can do that girl. You're good, I mean. Well, you made it online. So. Well, that's what it is. I was. So it is. Your end is, what do you see? And so it's a whole year. And. Yeah. I'm sorry, it's me, in, in, um, uh, so we're. Yeah. And then I, yeah, we don't need to do that, and I, I just said, no. Because. We're, I just sent it to a PDF. So, oh, it's, it's, I already did, anyway, I think you. Last email was on the. I'm back to you. No, I, I, I just told him, you know, you're not. And it's. As a, and that looked okay. Now, some of them for decats. You're going to flood. That's right, I'm not.
And you're always going, but. I, I don't know. Not that.
Yeah. I used to refer, unfortunately, you actually said, would do. If you're. And one of those we worked on was the Environmental Protection and Training Act from mid. Oh, wow. And it was awful, and the applications. And what they did back then was that we sent the Corps of Union leaders, all the participating faculty. And their, their B and W were typed. So we had to retype them, first of all. Yeah, so they can make them all happy in a way. And then, the application itself, when we finished printing out all of those curriculum papers, which is most. Most memorable. It was fifty pounds. And they wanted old legends original copies. And we're sending it off in a FedEx truck, take pick of a whole FedEx truck. This is nineteen ninety four. I mean, this is a while. And I'm looking at that saying, that's the environmental protection and training. But all the. Just. Because like, you just come. That was, that was harsh, you know, retying curriculum papers was not making her job. And you started to really, with another faculty who would list every single time, maybe presentations separately, from four Marines, like, type of. I didn't appreciate those. He's really a formatist, but you want to. And you can see exactly what, what was being rewarded, you could tell exactly what was being rewarded. And, and it did change me some ways, so, my dear, you know. I know, we're a lot of fun. I'm just hoping you're appreciating, like, hoping you're giving yourself a bubble bath, and a slide. Oh, I didn't think about it, I was doing it, so like, I was working there at the council, so. I understand that, and I did, I mean, I, the, the, a cog in action machine was sometimes really challenging. And frustrating, working with state finance, and a legislature, and layers and layers and layers of bureaucracy, just. And anything. Oh, okay, would you know? Okay, oh, so, I'm not his job, which is like, really, really small, not. I called them, I said. Maybe major policy thing? We just did, we just decided, and we just did it. Did I have to do it? I was like, oh, I didn't have to, I was like, oh. And it didn't take me nine months, and they were like, shut up. I go, okay, I'll say it later. The next day, I called back in tears, and I said, I'm gonna state, I'm gonna state, I'm gonna, because I can't, I, I miss the stinking legislature, I miss the. I miss HR. So that's what kind of sucks. I don't know, that's, I don't think it's hard, it's, it's trade-offs. Like, every single plus is also a minus. You don't have the support. But you have to go through layers and layers of bureaucracy. Um, you can be nimble and quick, but your reaches were this environmental circumference. So, it's, it was fascinating for this. Fascinating shit. And I appreciated that respect you were going so subtly, you went on to the other. There was. Oh, okay. And there is, I, I want to go back. All I had to do was give it a honey, you know? First, I did this every day, and, and try with the warehouse. I like this, and I get to see a lot of limited work, and lots of really, really hardworking. It's good, but how do you have to, if we can start generating gravity again? No, those seats, yeah, we can, yeah, it's a chicken park. We can get a hundred and eighty people in here, isn't it? There's eleven hundred seat neighbor. But that's kind of. And it counts, it's also, we had worked it while it's coming in June, and we knew this particular. You're, I'm watching your kid, and there's a seat. Closer, in the back row of the balcony. Even if I took all the seats itself, you were standing around in the. So. And I found. Not this one, because it's not going to start with. We'll try something. With a go through, though, you know, a little bit of rules, you know? That's where we'll start back. But yet, not all, not all. It's like, that's where. It's hard, it's hard. But, you know, we'll figure out. More, more stuff. One more step. Good to see you, Amy. So then you, then you, then you go, wow, then you go, okay.
Actually. This is probably the second hour.
Looking.
Are you here representing?
I don't, no, I don't always. Well, Steve, that's the thing, um.
I was just.
I wasn't sure. See, I'm really kind of just. How much money? But, you know, Craig is on. Um, it's on. And so, last year, this is Russia. So last year, um, so go ask questions. So this year, Craig should be over in Heath itself, and I was prepared to say things, just kind of overview. But they used to try to ask questions, and they really didn't need me to, but.
That we didn't.
Well, I, you know, I, I'm probably interested. I feel like I'm.
I don't expect to be here.
I know, I, I can't.
I hear.
Not good.
Well, it is a different.
It's not good. So I, yeah, and I really just want to see what that. Mike came in late to work, so. No, I'm very, that was easy, because, you know, I went back, and everything I sent, uh, there's a party that's gone. So I'm like, oh, why, it's just right here, you know, so we're seeing, so it was fine. And then I'm talking. I just, I just wanted to be prepared for tonight, and so, you know, I printed out a few things, brought. Do a little overview, but Craig jumped out, and he was in here. That's for. Follow up. And just. I think, um.
It was very surprising. A lot of people.
For the ones that were really, towards promotion, which are all things, however they're classified, those are ones. We need to know. You know, tell us what you're at, and all the two. Ask for these. Because they want us. Now I'm good to act today.
That's not losing.
No, it, it's not, and, you know, even though, like, if, if they, if they want our operational support, I can get, we can get that. So it's, it's promotional. Um, if they're canceling their, it's, it can be something, but. What would we? There's only no. It, and if you do it early, and then you cancel it. I can't really do that, so we're gonna have to ask a little more.
I can't really do that, so we're gonna have to ask a little more back. That is where I was looking for night marriage.
That's not.
Not, no. You like getting like glasses.
I was actually a little bit more.
Just, just like mold, molding to it. So I know, um, now I might get, we are getting the high ones. But, yeah, the, the prison, they were saying, yeah, no, we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna. And they pulled it out. They're probably gonna be able to pull out number one. I mean, areas and. You know, we're supposed to, okay, I can say all that. So if you don't have cars, but how can they still do a parade? And what's the other part? They're gonna do. They want to still do a parade, but. You don't have the rest of the show. So. You know. But, you know, one, one company said, yeah, you want everything just so you can survive. So a night of justification. Yeah, I know. After they did it, it was.
There's probably some, actually there's some. This opening has been intentional to sell.
It hasn't, because we did award more money into parks and.
Well.
What else? Now. Well, it's gonna take a year to do most of your. That didn't slow any of that down. So the restaurant counts. For counting. Those are, those are eligible. Restaurant or apps. So we did.
So you. Um, you can see that you.
Absolutely. I was coming up on the trees and they said, no, that's not. Oh, Chris is. Okay. I keep respect the.
I'll be with her for a little wait.
Right, I said, not wait. Why was the issue not being great shape? We have two question. On the morning it's written, afternoon it's done, so they're calling up the utility processing stuff.
Where your show was suddenly being lost.
Um, you know, at first it was like, really not at all. Cause we were thirty days, I mean, but it was new and everybody was calling. Thirty days that all three of us plus Phil were on the phones. All the time. And, and they did, they pulled phone records that said we had, you know, from like mid-December through mid-January. And, and we were able to really did a hard thing. Four hundred and twenty-six calls, an hour, fourteen minutes call. But the store five hours a day on the phone were just.
Wow.
So that's great. And then, um. First I thought you were coming here. I wonder about that.
Oh, we said nothing about it. It's Christy or she.
Janine is so awesome. Except when she didn't call the council, guys. That was crazy, Janine. Never sent a letter. A mean letter. Nobody waited for us except Sharon.
I don't think they threw out there.
Oh, okay. Start your suits.
Fine, too.
Probably sleep on.
Oh, good for him if he did. Yep. Motion's been made to adjourn from executive session and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Right? Are there any opposed? Thank you. Thank you for patiently waiting us out. Uh, we, we had some items we had to discuss regarding some land purchases and, uh, and some other discussions on, uh, some of the, uh, resolutions the county is considering. And so we appreciate, uh, you giving us the opportunity to do that and, uh, and waiting around. Anyway, uh, the ne- the next item on our agenda is approval of a land purchase for the road facility on the north end of the county.
Mister Chairman, I would move that we go ahead and, uh, exercise the opportunity to purchase the land, uh, for the. For enrichment for the road facility in the north end of the valley.
Second. Okay. Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed? Thank you. Last item is, uh, thirteen F, consideration of the Cache County Resolution twenty fifteen twenty. And, uh, we, uh, discussed this in our executive session as well. And, uh, do find a need to readdress this item that was passed back in two thousand and fifteen. It has served a, uh, an important purpose and helped us in being able to move toward a, a, uh, new general plan for the county on how we're going to handle and develop the growth that's certainly going to occur and is occurring now with us. And, uh, and so we have determined that, uh, over the next four to six weeks or so, we'll be readdressing this item on a more permanent basis. And so, uh, I don't know if we need, uh, I think we just need head nod from council members to, that, uh, this is something that will be, considering for, uh, change.
Yep.
That is correct.
We're not making any motions or decisions now, so we're not, not voting on, on that particular item, but, uh, but we do want, on the public record, that, uh, the council is, is committed to, uh, making something happen within the next four to six weeks. Okay, uh, are there any other business, any other business or any other council reports from council members? Gordy?
Um, I've got a concern out in our way and it, uh, needs to kind of maybe be addressed to Joe Merritt. Uh, I just got informed by some pretty unhappy farmers out, uh, our way that they were, uh, told by a developer, um, on Fifteenth West, which is the Tri Miller Road, that he's planning on closing that road down for somewhere between thirty-plus days. And the farmer's are just up in arms that that road is a road that you can't get to unless you want to go all the way around in a lot of things. And I agreed with him that if they're going to take one of the major county roads, even though it is in Nibley City, or where he wants to shut it down, that they will prohibit the use of that, uh, Fifteenth West. And, uh, it was my recommendation that we tell the developer that he can't close down that road because just past Nibley, it turns into the county road and the people need to get to their land, um, that's past where they want to close it down. And so that should be recommended that they flag it so the people can still go back and forth. I don't know what, I don't know what we can do on the county side to keep Nibley City from giving that developer the right to shut down that main road. And, and I guess I'm looking for advice from you, Joel, as to what can we do to help the farmers out up in there? It's not just the farmers, that is a major road going into Tri Millers.
That's the first one I've heard that, that you can shut it down. I'm looking at the. But that's the first one.
There's a lot of coming from, uh, Joel, I didn't receive an email today from Nibley City requesting that order, but we have not given the permission or direction on.
Please, please don't give them that, right? Because that is a major road for a lot of.
I have the same concern you would, right there, because.
You know, history on that road is the last time that they built a subdivision in there. They closed that road in the fall and then they ran into a bunch of zoning problems. They ran into a bunch of water problems and that road was closed all winter. And the poor people that lived on that road had to go clear up there to be able to get around to come back down thirty-two hundred. And I mean, it made a huge burden for that, you know, one or two families that lived on that road. Now there's a lot more people that live on that road.
Cause we were, we were actually very happy that Nibley City, um, came to us and asked us, because we've had other cities recently that have not come to the county and just you find out that they've already closed the county road on our permission without you asking us. Higher people.
Anyway, we, we need to be right ready for it because it's happening very quickly. In fact, they unloaded a big, uh, track master and went right down some private property to get to the land that they're gonna work on. And the guy that drove that didn't realize that that wasn't the property he had permission to drive on. And so, you know, imagine how red the face of that farmer was when a guy went driving right across his field. Anyway, be aware that this is coming and I'm not happy with it and none of the residents are happy with shutting that road down.
We, we appreciate you letting us know and, and anyone else find out about this kind of stuff, please bring it to our attention because a lot of times we're not aware of it.
Well, be aware that they haven't shut it down yet, but maybe tomorrow it will be. That's how fast it's happening.
Thanks, Gordon. Anything else?
Um, no, that's gotta be upset enough, can't think.
Gina?
Um, I apologize to my party, I said that my daughter's graduation, we did the follow-up date, who's a principal, and that was a neat experience for them to make the accommodations under the circumstances, so.
Well, congratulations.
Thanks, she's, she's excited, so anyway, that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Dave?
I just wanted to thank Bryce for his follow-up on my question and enlightening me on, uh, some EMS licensing information and stuff that we talked about. And I appreciate that. Uh, I think, uh, staff and that responds really fast, really quick and is, is, uh, we've got some good employees that, you know, act on the EMS. That's it.
Thank you, John.
I only have one thing, though. I'm still nervous about it. I'd like to know how, uh, the district came for county council. I still don't savvy why about half of us are from Logan City. And we got one high school in Logan and we got four in the county. And I know it's supposed to be by population, I, I don't, I don't savvy how that works out.
That's cause my father goes to county school.
Somebody asked me and every time they ask, but I don't know.
And so I, I keep being told about U S U's population.
Should count.
I supplied a memo and I'm happy to.
You did?
Yeah. I emailed this.
To me?
Yeah, I'm happy to email that. Come on, we're supposed to nine to nine. We have the statute, that's, you should have that, but all, all we look at is on it and like. We sent you, you have a memo.
Oh, okay.
So, and you can get that to those constituents that ask you, um, it did, um, set forth the population estimates, too. It is based on estimates and, and, uh, there was some information that was actually included in that about population, too.
Re, re, resend it to me, if you would, please. Thank you.
Paul?
Nothing for me today.
Barbara?
Nothing for me.
All right. Well, it was sure nice to be back together again and happy birthday, John.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Happy birthday.
Yeah?
Easterville.
Yeah. Should we all sing to John?
Yeah.
We're okay.
Some push and some loophole.
That's why I sang when I came down. So where's his picture up there on the wall?
Janine, you know, we've got some really good pictures of John. I'd like to see some of them on the wall.
Probably see him sometime.
Sometime.
He's gonna be sneaky.
All right. Well, with that, we'll adjourn. Thank you all. And no rubber mallet this time. No hammer.